Yeah, and they could give one too, but everybody's already been there.
I'm sorry if you can say anything or ask for it.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right, good comment. So we're done with all the public hearings at this time?
I'm making copies for you.
For the agenda?
Yeah, for everything that I have that I would have had before meeting.
Okay.
Correct the politician.
We'll, we'll take a recess for about five minutes while she gets us the additional paperwork. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I see it says, um, that you, oh, no, it was right, okay. I thought you had it backwards. I thought you had, um, had it set up.
We're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna take, since Desiree had a, a situation, and she showed up late, give us about five minutes and we'll go right into our regular meeting. This is okay.
It's probably warm.
About five minutes. How's everything going at the house?
Better now.
Everybody getting better?
Yeah, yeah. My wife had it, the worst of it, everybody. The little one had a fever for a day. Me and the four-year-old didn't get it.
That's just like my wife. And she never got nothing.
No, we just, I mean, we had enough room that we slept in, you know, separate.
Yeah.
Everybody had their own bathroom.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, hard to keep between a four-year-old apartment and the house, so.
Oh, Jesus.
Felt inevitable, but somehow we did it. Yeah, we got our test results Monday.
Okay, thank you, sir, Mr. Harvey. You can turn yours over. She's here, she can, let her know what you've got recorded. She's got her little recorder over there, I saw.
Yeah, I thought for sure it's gonna mess me up for my trip next week.
Where was you going?
We're going to Vegas.
Oh.
Well, they say we're going to Vegas, flying to Vegas and then driving to Tonopah, Nevada, which is in the middle of the high desert up there.
Oh, wow.
They, uh, couple of old hotels, it's like the halfway point between Red on Vegas.
Yeah.
And a couple of hotels, my wife, the group that she works for is gonna manage them, so.
Oh, wow. So you guys get some free time?
So I get to tag along on the trip. She was supposed to take last week.
Hey, we get to recording though.
Thank you.
I asked him to make sure he did it.
So this is everything put up there.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
It's all signed things from the surveyor.
Perfect, I'll put it up.
Yep.
Thank you.
She was gonna come and go very fast.
Huh?
She was gonna come and go.
It could just, I don't know, people emailing to me or.
I emailed it to you. Should get it in a second.
You're great.
That's what I was looking for. She's got in this package. Here it is. You notice this, like, notice the public hearings? Mark Bolton, we did it right, Chris Dunn, we didn't miss it out. And here's the notes. For twenty federal fifty chief. Well, here, look at one thing, Jerry. Those are mine. Those are yours, though. We got ready to start again. Desiree, you ready to go?
I'm ready. I think you guys have everything you need.
Well, there's not nothing on the agenda. What were you in here for? Number two, psh, number three. Yeah.
Um, I did put the sidewalk plans in there, or the sidewalk notes.
Yeah.
The only thing I had to press down was you had eleven and twelve down for the times. And I thought it was twelve and one, so I just wanted to check.
What's that?
Twelve and one.
No, it was twelve and one. It was not eleven.
I didn't think so, but.
No, you're right. No, I apologize. I did them from memory because I got stuck at work today. At one point, I'm like, I'm not getting out of here. Okay. He's like, screw it, make your own tacos and off the door.
I almost commented to see if you would have delivered them to me.
I would have. I was making them right up till I ran out the door. Okay. We'll call our, uh, meeting to order for the regular planning board meeting at six thirty on January the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And we'll start right on the, uh, go down the agenda as it's, uh, we have it in front of us. I hope it does. Do you have any extra agendas for the public?
Yes, sir.
They might want a copy of the agenda.
Yeah.
You have them already?
Yeah.
Okay. No, she just made them up.
Also, then Harvey had a couple back there. Was this one that you have?
No, Harvey had them, yeah.
Harvey gave them to them, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Harvey filled in there for you guys, right? You worked hard on the copy here. I appreciate it.
Okay, now, sounds good. Anyway, if we go, uh, start down the agenda now, it's been called to order. We got a public hearing number one, we had public hearing number two. So items one and two are completed at this time. Number three correspondence that we have, there's a whole package in here, Desiree. Okay.
Uh, the, really, the only correspondence is the letters of incomplete application that went out.
What's that?
The letters of incomplete application that went out. Those were the only letters that came in there.
Oh, there's also, uh, you got the December fifteenth pound me, uh, meeting. Prose, for prose development. Sure, my, okay. Called to order, December the first. Also, the only real one we need to, you say the one that went out to them about their incomplete application?
Yeah.
I don't see that. I don't have them either.
Sorry.
Okay. I don't see that, that and the one out to both of them.
There was, uh, I heard it all.
No. The one for, uh, Mark Bolton and also the one for, uh, Mr. Barrett, Rodney Barrett. Correct?
Right.
When you get a chance, you can, uh, we'll, we'll go, uh, keep, that's the correspondence. They got their letters about their incomplete packages, both of them. Okay, now, we, that's item number three. Item number four, review of minutes for December the first workshop and December the fifteenth planning board meeting. Please look those over and see if there's any corrections we gotta make before we, uh, vote to accept them as written. December the fifteenth, you're on that one?
We're on December the fifteenth.
Okay. Desiree, what about, um, do you have anything on your, uh, upgrade on the site plan review?
Um, I haven't spoken to this last minute. Last I knew it was there, they weren't gonna review it, but I haven't heard if they reviewed it or not. Um, I did make one more slight change. Um, in that big paragraph on the front of the application, it referenced, um, a site integrity ordinance. Tariffville doesn't have a site integrity ordinance, so I referenced the article that is the site integrity prop, you know, where the.
It's in the land use book?
Yeah, so I, I just referenced the article number and then the section.
Okay.
Other than that, everything, that was the only other change I made after.
So you haven't brought that back to us yet? We don't know that yet.
No.
Okay. Mr. Harvey, have you guys, has a board of selectmen had a chance to look over that application yet? That, uh, land, that, uh,
Changed.
Application for site plan review, the changes we wanted to make to it, have you guys had a chance to look it over yet?
No.
Okay, all right. Any, uh, changes anyone see from the board on review of minutes for December the first and December the fifteenth? Because we can accept it as written, if I make a motion, accept, both of them as written?
I move to accept the minutes for December first and December fifteenth as written.
Second, by Saban, all in favor, unanimous? Okay. You didn't have in here any place, uh, Desiree, I see where we canceled the January fifth workshop.
Um.
Remember we canceled that?
Yeah, but it wouldn't be part of the minutes for.
The nineteenth?
Right, I submitted an agenda to the office to be posted, it's a meeting was canceled.
Right.
If I could get the printed work, I, you have to copy that.
Okay, all right. Because I know we canceled that workshop. Okay. Now we're down to old business. Site plan review for Mark Bolton, who's the applicant. And this Gally Selkirk is the owner, fifty-five road between the ponds, Mount UL, lot double oh seven, private residence. The package that was submitted to us was not complete, first off. And we've asked for some additional information. Did that come in yet, Desiree?
I haven't seen it.
You have not seen it?
Oh.
That covers it all.
That covers it all. Jesse says that what he needs covers.
Those three boxes are negative, that covers. So the last question with the easements.
Yes.
Those are in the deed that you guys already have copied up, ready to bottom the deed.
See if I can find the deed. What's that? Now, what does it say, uh, we asked for about the right of way?
Yeah, it's in the, the right of way of easements, these, all these, that's right, that's right.
That's the only restriction I see, huh?
And it was width.
Thirty feet.
And wide ways and long ways, so that key.
This key along with that drawing, you're telling us?
Yes.
Drawing which? On driveways?
Yeah.
Oh, here's driveway A, B. Yeah, I see them now. Driveway forty, number forty-seven, where's it? It's twenty feet wide. See, it's, on here, it's got driveways A, B, C, and D. Here, he's got it down as item forty-seven, forty-four, sixty. Which one you referring this to then?
One, A, sixteen.
See the driveways that I have here?
This is H.
H, where's H at?
I think it was given to us at the last meeting.
At the last meeting, we don't, I don't have it.
It's not part of the application that we have on that here.
Nope. It's not in here, it's not in the package that was submitted. No. That's all there is. We need, we need copies of that, so we, everybody on the board.
Yep.
Yes, you got, you got one, uh, Saban?
I'm gonna online it, this doesn't match like I first saw it either.
Yeah, mine don't match. How did you, how did you get it?
My back. I mean, you know, because his back is, uh, uh, ready.
Huh? There's, there's no H. See, it goes G.
G, A.
There is an H, but it's not in here.
Take a look at that, Alan.
Hmm, yeah. Forty-four is twenty feet wide, forty-seven is twenty feet wide. Sixty is fourteen feet wide, okay, sixty-one is fourteen feet wide. Sixty-five is fourteen, sixty-four and seventy is seventeen feet. Okay. So theirs is eighteen feet wide. All right. That would, okay.
Do you think we should just need to table this?
Huh?
Yeah. Without the, uh, any measurements, it doesn't really make questions.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have it, so we're gonna, he's gonna have to. Thank you, sir. Okay. I think just.
One in this package, but nobody else.
Huh? Okay. Board, do you have any other, uh, questions about this application or concerns at all? Does the board at this time?
I think this application is gonna drastically change once we see the survey that Jesse is going to do with the applicant.
Yeah. Jesse won't do that, that's gotta be addressed through the CEO to make sure he goes back to the applicant.
Through the surveyor, whoever's going to do it.
Okay.
So what we're looking at are the relevant.
It is. That's true. Aaron, you got anything?
No, I was just taking a look, I mean, I was concerned that we brought up, and from the carrying around setback and, you know, being able to meet that, given the amount of land that they have, where the high, high water line is.
Yes, very much so. As a chairman, I'm of the opinion that we're gonna have to, uh, what was that word you used? We're gonna have to table this application at this time. It's gotta be tabled, because there's some additional information that we need, and there's some additional work that's gonna be required by the, uh, applicant to be more in line with the Shoreland District, uh, guidance. The property presently sits only eleven feet from the high water mark. It needs to be moved back as far as possible to increase the distance from the, from the proper edge of the building to the high, uh, the high water line mark on the pond. That means that there's probably gonna have to be a survey done, is that correct, CEO?
Yeah.
You're gonna have a survey, and what class is it, class D?
I think it's a class D.
Class D?
Yes, I agree.
A class D survey? You're also gonna have to go before the board of, 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 uh, appeals for a variance and ask for a, uh, a variance from the setback, yes.
That would be determined once we.
Okay, I'm just gonna let him know he's gonna have to go, though, because you can't do nothing if we decide that's what's gonna have to be done until that variance is authorized to allow the, the, the new building to come forward. But the property's gonna have to be surveyed. And we need to see all the, the elevations on, no, not the, they're certainly elevations, all the, the marks, the states of existing conditions now. Exactly where the leach field is, where you're gonna put the new tank in relation to the leach field. How far, Jesse, we had to work with you a little bit on how far forward we can bring that property, and we need to show it on a drawing, a complete drawing, a drawing that's one sheet with every, all this information on it. And since it's gonna have to be surveyed, we want the surveyor to sign that and put his, uh, stamp on it. I want the survey stamp on it, too. And then we'll see how far back it, uh, that we can, uh, try to get that property away from the, uh, high water line on the pond. So to bring us more in line, what I'm trying to say, Mr. Bolton, is more in line with the direction of the Shoreland District requirements. What's printed on that table, I think it's table two? That's what we're gonna fa, try to follow and bring you as close as possible. I know you got a non-conforming lot already, we know that. But we still need to get as close as we can to the requirements of everything that's in that, because that's existing. I know it's existing, so, but you're gonna tear it down, if you're gonna tear it down, it's no longer existing, you're doing something new. If you're gonna do something new, we wanna follow the guides of that Shoreland District as close as possible. So we're tabling this application at this time, it's gonna have to have a lot of work done. I will, I'm not done, I just finished talking. Anything else before I do? Anything else from the board? Did I cover everything? Or is the board, anybody else wanna add anything to that? If not, I accept, I entertain a motion from the board to table this until additional information is, uh, provided by the applicant and, and working with the CEO. So moved. So moved by Aaron, second by Saban, all in favor, unanimous? Okay, Mr. Bolton?
Thank you, Bolton. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have one more for tonight, old business. And that's a site plan from, uh, the U of, uh, Don Barrett at twenty Federal Road, Mount UL, lot oh oh four, retail business for Woodstove. Really, that's, it shouldn't be her name on there, that should be Rodney's name on there. Rodney's name's on the applicant. Rodney's name should be on her, not Don's. Yeah, of course, yeah.
Everything else went to Rod, so.
Okay.
She, she does more than talking.
Do what?
She does more than talking.
Okay. Everybody, does everybody have a revised, uh, drawing?
He does.
No, we haven't. I mean, does the board have a re, copy of the revised drawing of everything we'd asked for? Do you have one yet, uh, Aaron?
I said, down there. I don't know.
Do you have one? Okay. Roger? This is a drawing that Mr. Barrett revised and put all the details on here, which is what we'd asked for. He did a great job. I do appreciate it. And he showed us where everything is in relation to the property. Old, old mill, there's no road access from the back of the, uh, fenced area. So you either come in the front of that building to get in, or that little gate in the front, or you don't get in, because it's so high up. Uh, he's, all the doors are here, he's taken this, uh, and it's a change of use from, what, what was you in there, what was it called when you was in there? Childcare facility, back to retail and parts.
And the office.
Yes, and then an office to stay in there. So that's what they, uh, what they were planning on doing. Uh, with this revised drawing, I think they've asked, they've supplied everything we'd asked for. Anybody got questions over this re, uh, part of the package revised?
No.
Aaron, you have any additional questions or any concerns?
No.
Okay. If not, would the, anybody, would any of the board members like to make a motion on this package at this time? First off, we got the size of complete, so we can accept it. Is the package complete at this time?
With the updated sketch, it is.
With updated sketch and all the details, yeah, I think it is. But we need a motion to accept the package as being complete.
I'll make the motion to accept the application as complete.
Saban makes a motion to accept the package as complete. Second, Aaron?
Yep.
All in favor, unanimous? Okay. If the package is complete, what's the pleasure of the board as far as changing this use? From childcare back to, uh, retail and office?
I guess you'd call it retail.
Yeah, I got retail and wood stove. Retail, wood stove, parts, and office.
I am so moved that we approve it.
So moved.
Second.
That's approved by Saban, second by Aaron, all in favor, unanimous? Mr. Barrett, you're done.
Am I done?
You're, you're.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You get the letter out to him, Desiree, please. Okay. New business, we have no new business at this time. Is that correct? Done. Now, we're down to item number seven, open to the public for questions, comments, as long as you don't yell at us too much. Anything from, anything from the public at this time? Yes, Jesse?
Oh, I just didn't say it, no.
Okay. Okay, the last thing on there, agenda is schedule a workshop for Wednesday, January, February the second. Do we need a workshop? I know we're gonna need one to do some review of that fifty-five road between the ponds, but we don't have the data yet to really review and go over. I don't know of anything else that we need to meet on this, unless we wanna talk about the land use ordinance, uh, book. And some of the changes, there's a lot of changes that needs to be done to that book, guys. And sooner or later, we're gonna have to start meeting on that.
So what I mean, schedule a meeting.
Just for land use ordinance only?
Yep.
Okay? February the second? Motion? Saban, second by Aaron, all in favor? Aye, which is unanimous, and it's gonna be for, uh, review of the land use book only. Give me changes, we're gonna know, suggested changes or reviews, the things we gotta get done to bring that book into modern, twenty, the twenty-first century.
Just confirming six P M.
Huh? Six P M?
Yep.
I'm sorry, we should have made that six P M, but it would be at six P M on February the second.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The sidewalk notes that Steven did, do you wanna vote to approve them, or do you wanna just wait, or, um, how do you wanna do those?
He's read them and I, they were right on.
They're in the package you gave.
They're in the package.
And I changed the dates, so I have to, I have the, for the times.
You changed the times back, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then we need to vote to approve them as amended.
So moved.
So moved by Aaron, second by Saban. All in favor? Unanimous?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Saban. All in favor? Unanimous at six fifty-one P M.